I'm literally in the United States of America. Super father of our rich families. We're a nation. We do so with liberty and justice for all.
Linda Wolf.
Hey, Councilmember Hornick.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Santos. Vice Mayor Silva.
Here.
And Mayor King.
Here. Uh, no reordering of the agenda.
No, sir.
Public comments, I do have one from, uh, Mr. Tarman, if you'd like to come up to the podium.
I want to thank Mayor King for his service. I've been involved civically from Carp to Santa Barbara in our valley for over fifty years. He is one of the finest public servants I've had the pleasure to deal with. I would encourage council to appoint him to the fourth district seat. He is a full-time asset to the city which he truly loves. Now, back to business, Mr. Wolf, where is our cycle cop? Speeding on two forty-six is getting worse. And I hope you're calling the CHP to patrol up to our city limits. God bless you gentlemen for doing a windmill nursery to our western boundary. Because that's where the speeding really gets going. Thank you. I hear council is considering a hundred thousand dollar outlay for the arts. Let's get down to basics. That would pay for one half year of a cycle cop. To be candid, the Caltrans mods will not fix the problem. All out patrolling will, it's the only thing that will. One eight-hour patrol will not be enough, so save the hundred thousand dollars for that, please. When we get rich, we can do lots of artwork. Basic safety for pedestrians is top of mind in the general plan. Please reset, refresh yourselves, everybody, on the general plan. Finally, you have major developers on our doorstep. You need to hit them with traffic mitigation fees to improve circulation. You need to lower height limits and density. Nobody wants this to be looking like Oxnard or Newberry Park. Finally, you need an architectural board of review. With all due respect to the new mayor, we don't want a thirty-foot-high cup of coffee in a drive-thru next to the Shell station. Thank you all, God bless you.
You were, Jay, and you left out Santa Monica and those cities.
Sorry. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to the consent calendar. This'll be minutes of November fourteen, twenty twenty-four, regular city council meeting, list of claims to be approved and ratified for payment to date fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Year twenty twenty-five proposed calendar of city council meetings, monthly treasures report, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, ordinance number twenty four oh five, and ordinance of the city council, City of Buellton, California, approving the first amendment to the development agreement of twenty-one dash DA dash zero one, amend number one for the five eighteen mixed-use development project located on five eighteen Avenue of Flags, assessors parcel number thirty-seven dash one seventy dash zero zero six, and authorizing the execution of the first amended, um, by the city manager, second reading. Ordinance number twenty-four oh six, an ordinance to the city council, the City of Buellton, California, approving the first amendment to the development agreement twenty dash DA dash zero one, amend number one for the Creekside Village Mixed Use Development Project located at four eighty Avenue of Flags, assessors parcel number one thirty-seven dash seventeen dash zero seven zero, and authorizing execution of the first amendment to the city manager, also second reading. Resolution number twenty-four twenty-nine, a resolution of the city council, City of Buellton, California, declaring, clarifying, and clarifying the results of the general municipal election held on November fifth, twenty twenty-four. Resolution number twenty-four thirty, a resolution of the city council, City of Buellton, California, approving and adopting a local road safety plan or LRSP. Uh, acceptance of SYBCO CDBG dash one four zero West Highway two forty-six TI projects, rejection of bid for the library field parking lot project, and approval of a member agency contribution or reimbursement agreement. Any public comment on this? Nope, let's bring him back to the council for a possible motion.
Hi, Mr. President.
Oh, second.
Linda.
Okay. Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silva.
Hi.
Councilmember Hornick.
Hi.
And Mayor King.
Hi.
Um, Mayor King.
Presentations.
We have no presentations.
Okay.
I will note that, um, uh, Councilor Sanchez has just joined via Zoom. Um, uh, I don't know, perhaps the city attorney wants to weigh in on his ability to participate in the meeting from this, at this point.
Uh, so he can't vote because we didn't set it up, um, as. Sorry, he can't vote because we didn't set this one up as a, um, uh, one with a Zoom availability to the public, it's not on the agenda, and, and so we can't set it up that way. Um, what we can do is allow him to watch the meeting and, um, give the same public comment that anyone else could give.
Refresh my memory, Counselor, wasn't there an exception to that?
There is, but we would need to be, uh, advised so that we could put the Zoom, um, address up on the screen and let any member of the public who's wa- currently watching the live stream of it be able to then get on with Zoom as well. Uh, that would be the emergency circumstances exception, and that would completely, um, work for tonight if we had that capability. Um, so I would ask, I think, Rose Hess, do we have any capability to put that up and let uh, anybody watching, um, the live stream, um, let them, uh, join by Zoom?
We could, if we do, we share a screen and we have that instead of, uh, the video with the camera, that's the only alternative, if we're, you know, sharing a presentation, but we can't have it. I can't create a banner at the bottom of the screen.
So we'd have to turn the video off and leave the, the, leave the Zoom address up there for, for viewers to copy.
Copy that. So I, I leave it up to the council.
Uh, I don't think there's any pressing issue where we would have to do that, so John can just watch along. Okay, public hearings.
We have no public hearings.
Uh, council member comments or items? Uh, if you would, go ahead.
I'll turn it over to you, Sky, would like to interrupt, if I may. Um, one of the few opportunities I get to jump in and, and take control of the city council meeting, so I'm gonna happily do that this evening. Um, Mayor King, members of the city council, item, uh, number twelve is, uh, council reorganization. And, uh, council reorganization is occurring, is occurring as a result of the most recent municipal elections that were held. Um, uh, the first item on this, uh, this evening is to recognize our outgoing mayor, Dave King, for his dedicated service to the city of Buellton. Uh, it is my pleasure as the city manager to do that, and, uh, I would like to lead, um, lead off by thanking you personally for the, uh, the work that you've done this year, for the great support you've shown our staff, for the tremendous support you've shown me and the efforts that we've made, uh, to, to take on any number of issues, primarily public safety within the city here. Um, the, the amount of energy and effort you've put in this year have been exemplary and, uh, kind of put me to shame. Uh, so thank you very much for all of that. Um, and I know that, uh, our staff, like, you feel much the same way, and if any of them would like to jump in line and, and speak, uh, during the evening tonight, I won't mind, so don't feel shy. Um, but I would, on behalf of the city, also like to make a formal presentation to you for your years of dedicated service, and so let me do so here. I'll present you with this as a token of all of our appreciation for all the years you've served this town. That is awesome.
Trust me, that will be proudly displayed.
So, um, now that I've made the, the official presentation, do we have any council members that would like to say a few words, Mr. King?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for showing me the ropes and inviting me in and your friendship and just kind of teaching me all the things you know since you've been here so long.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I didn't have anything formal planned, um, but I do want you to know that how much I appreciate you and the work that you've done, I think you know that. Um, I was just elected two years ago. Uh, Dave King was very good about bringing me on board and, and trying to help me, uh, navigate just the, the role being up here. He also turned me on to a lot of, uh, how he saw proper development and, and future, uh, vision of the city. Uh, and just from talking with staff and, and the people involved in the day-to-day managements of the city, uh, it's clear that, uh, you fought hard and you work hard for the city, and I know that you love the city, and so city's indebted to you for that, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
It's been a real joy being up here on the dais with you. It's been a fun time, I think you and I have had some really great conversations, and it's been a very, uh, enlightening moment, I think it's really great that there's been different perspectives up here, and I really appreciate all of the experience you've shared and how much you clearly are passionate about this town, and I thank you for all the work and all the hours you've put in. Thank you.
No, I'd like to, uh, thank Dave for all his time and service. I had the pleasure to work under him as a city council member when I was working for the city and, uh, was an inspiration. And, uh, I've just been honored to work with you and, and I've been proud to work with you side by side all this time. And, uh, I wish, I wish you well, everything goes good. Enjoy your retirement, whatever you're gonna do. And, uh, anyway, uh, nothing but pride and for the city and, and, uh, I'm just happy to work with you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, John. Retirement, I've never worked so hard since I retired. What are you talking about? Sorry, I work this hard as a high patrolman.
Is there anyone else who'd like to say some, uh, anything, uh, to Mayor King? Yes.
Hello, my name is Fosh G. Wilson. I wanted to say that, um, one of the greatest things a teacher can do is to teach what the knowledge that they have, and then to step back and allow someone else, um, to move forward in their place, and you've done that with respect and honor, um, and I honor you here today, and thank you for your service to the community, I've had interactions with you briefly, but they've always been respectful, um, and kind and courteous, and I thank you for what you've given to the city, and also the respect that you've shown with Mayor Alex Silva as he steps into your place. I do hope he will, as someone suggested, serve for the fourth district and continue to use your expertise and knowledge for the good of this community, thank you.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Valencia.
Good evening.
My longtime friend.
Yes, sir. From the Sheriff's Department and law enforcement perspective, we've enjoyed and still continue to enjoy work with the city. Despite what anybody says, the work we've done has been impactful. I can tell you from experience, our motor is here tonight, doing what we can with what we've had to work with, and your cooperation and in leading that charge, I can tell you that, I believe, you explained to me that the two forty-six is now referred to as Salmon River and law enforcement is the bear. I know they're terrified of the two forty-six from the work we've done, our counterparts with the CHP, our work relationship because of you is paramount right now, and, and it's successful. So I wanted to thank you, and I go back, way back, no lies between us, and when we take that oath of public service, it's a serious oath because it's service before self. And that's what all of you are doing, and that's what we are doing, and you've done that for my whole career throughout your tenure here at the city, and we're grateful for that. And we, although look forward to working with the city of Buellton, you'll be missed in this capacity, so I just wanted to say thank you from the Sheriff's Department, CHP, and all of the law enforcement, public safety entities, with the Buellton is a better place, so thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Anyone else? Okay, I do have, um, one written comment that has come in that I've, I've been asked to read. Um, and, uh, this is from, uh, former mayor Sierra. Uh, she writes, Dave, we've been involved with the city of Buellton since two thousand eight when we became city council members. We spent a lot of time, and I believe we left our town better than when we started. I've worked hard to keep the budget growing, pushed hard for the River Trail, and continually battered, battled, excuse me, we worked hard to keep the budget growing, pushed hard for the River Trail, and continually battled bureaucracy to make Highway two forty-six safer. As mayor, I appreciate and know the time it took for committees and meetings, a lot. Thank you for all you did for the residents and the city of Buellton. Good job, Holly.
Okay. If she's not watching, Frank, can you say thank you for, for me? Um.
Please.
Um, Dave, I've known you for a long time, we go way back, we kind of, and grew up together here, so, um, you've always been uh, good to staff and everybody, and I enjoyed working with you. Um, I remember after Russ Hicks passed away, you kind of stepped into that leadership role uh, for the council and for the city and, um, for me. So, I appreciate that, and I hope we see you around, and I hope we see you on other committees and.
Small town.
I know. It's a small valley, but thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you, Linda.
All right. If there, if there is nothing else, no one, oh, I'm sorry, we, we do have someone else, we, we have arrival here, Mr. Burkin. Please.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, Mayor King, on behalf of Assemblymember Greg Hart and Senator Monique Lamon in the state legislature, we want to congratulate you for your service. Thank you for all that you've done for the city of Buellton, for your past service in public safety. I know Assemblymember Hart and Senator Lamon, he got to collaborate you, with you through SB CAG, through some of the regional collaboration, and they're very grateful for your service. Um, so on behalf of them, we have certificates for you, I just want to thank you for all you've done for the community.
Thank you, thank you for coming in, absolutely.
All right, Mayor King.
Okay. Uh, yes. I didn't really write something out, but you know, it's kind of, it comes from the heart, is that when I first got on council many years ago, two thousand eight, I, I did it because I wanted to serve my community. You know, and I mean, there's nothing better to give back to, you know, people that you serve. I want to think that over the years that I, every decision that I made, everything that I brought up, any betterment I tried to do to the city was for the people that lived here and, and not self-serving, not anything that, that I wanted for myself. Uh, over the last many years, I have been able to meet some very interesting people in the places that I've gone. Met people from all over the state, from going to California League of Cities or JPIA meetings, you know, I met a lot of good friends. Um, I never, and, and almost, it was almost kind of embarrassing to say that I was mayor because I didn't want the recognition, and I never really got into the, the role of being on city council or as being the mayor of, of trying to move up my standing in politics, you know, run for another office, run for supervisor or, or whatever the case may be, so my only reason for being here was, like I said, to serve the people that are here. Um, I'm hoping that some of the programs that I have, uh, worked on over the years, that this council that's up here now, uh, and the mayor, uh, can work on some of those programs and projects and make those things happen. So I appreciate all of you for being here tonight, um, it's, it's been my honor to serve you people that are sitting out here that are citizens of Bu- Buellton. Uh, I appreciate our enforcement that's here, our sheriffs, and, you know, search and destroy, right, on that two forty-six. Um, uh, I'm going to miss this, uh, I enjoy being here, I enjoy going to the meetings, uh, but I know that it will be left in good hands. So thank all of you, uh, and last time I didn't get reelected, I spent five years and twenty-six thousand miles with Jeff Bridges, so it's always not a bad thing when something doesn't happen. So I appreciate it and thank all of you for being here.
Um, now in order to, uh, allow people to come up and, and congratulate you, I'm, I'm gonna call for a five-minute recess.
Okay, look at that, you truly have taken over this.
Now, not by short. No, 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 not, not by long shot, he stretched it. What's that? There, there's one from, uh, Senator Lamona, one from Assemblyman Hart. Both for Dave. And, I'm taking this, yes.
There's a box for your eagle, man.
Meeting back over to you.
So yes, I do.
Shall we? Yes. All right.
Well, thank you all for being here tonight. Unfortunately, Councilmember Sanchez is only able to join us via Zoom, so we will be doing his swearing in at the January ninth meeting. But I did want to take a moment just to acknowledge, John, congratulations, I'm sorry, Councilmember Sanchez. Congratulations. I don't know if you want to turn your camera on or if you are not in a place where you want your camera on at this time. But the audience is waiting with bated breath. So just wanted to take a moment to recognize. And you'll get another round of applause, but round of applause for Councilmember Sanchez for joining us and for his reelection. I also like to think that he's probably walked away at this point and missed the entire thing. So anyway. So tonight we will be doing.
You can't. My finger beating on the side pad, but I couldn't get on. And thank you very much and I'm just proud to be part of this council and I'm sure things are gonna go wonderfully and congratulations on your mayorship and Alicia's council membership. And it's been a pleasure. And I guess I'll get my reward on next month. But thank you.
Thank you for joining us tonight, Councilmember Sanchez. And so then what we will be doing is first off, if we can, I'd love to invite Councilmember Lewis. Congratulations on your reelection and joining us here. If you would like, we will do your oath of office down at the front. And I know we're going full pomp and circumstance, but we have asked, would anyone from your family like to join you while doing this swearing in?
Do you want to join me while I'm doing this swearing in? Nope.
Anyone was here, Mr. Lewis is right there. So yeah, so then, yeah, if you'd like to go ahead.
Your oath of office and your certificate of election.
Thank you.
And you can raise your right hand and and I will read the oath to you and affirm at the end.
Got it.
All right. Do you solemnly affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic? That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? That you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion? And that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
I do.
Congratulations.
And I wanted to leave open space for the floor if you'd like to make any comments or anything for the people at large.
I just want to say thank you. Thank you, everybody, you know, in the audience for my family for supporting me, for doing yet another crazy thing when I said I'm gonna calm down and do less things. I meant maybe next time. So just thank you, everyone, for your faith in me and yeah, that's it. Thank you.
We're doing round robin here, girl.
Congratulations.
I just want to say thank you very much for running again and for serving on this. I, when I first joined the council two years ago, you were very much involved in the mentorship and helping with the understanding of what's going on. You've always been very much wanting to bring new community members into the fold and wanted to engage everyone. And I think you've done a great job with that. And I really appreciate all the work you've done for council and all the work you'll do in the next four years. It's been a joy to work with you over this time.
Thank you.
Do you want to take a second bite at that Hudson? Did anyone in the audience want to make any comments at this time? Great. Thank you again. And then I have to awkwardly introduce myself. I'll get sworn in at this moment now. So thank you. But I, yeah, I'm gonna ask my husband to join at the time.
Give you that, your oath of office and certificate of election. Okay, and do you solemnly affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic? And that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? And that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion? And that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you're about to enter? Congratulations.
I'm sorry, your seat's in the middle, Mayor.
I have to lower this seat. I have tiny legs.
So that you don't have to ask for words about yourself. I would like to start by saying, I think it was my very, very first council meeting as a seated city council where this young man over here applied to be on the planning development. And that first round didn't work out. And I just want to say that sometimes rejection is really, really hard, especially when you have like your whole heart in it and you you're really excited and you're zealous and you're like, I want to be involved and it doesn't work out. And sometimes that can be, you know, like life altering, changing of, you know, the whole trajectory. And you didn't give up and you stuck with it. And here you are. And I think that that is awesome. I think having new voices on the council and getting new people, new populations from the city involved is super, super important. And I just want to thank you for not letting that change your trajectory and for not giving up and for fighting to be a part of the city and city council. So I'm glad you're here.
Thank you.
Say any words.
David, if there's one thing that can be said for you is that you are tenacious and hardworking. And two years ago, I started this journey with you in running for city council. And just from the beginning, you've been, I think we both agree, like the brother neither of us wanted. I appreciate you in in dealing with me and helping me see my faults as well as my my positives. And you do the same. You bring the same energy to the city. And I'm sure you will serve as a fine mayor and I look forward to working with you in that capacity.
Thank you very much.
And we have a huge audience here. Is there any from the audience that would like to say anything for our new Mr. Mayor?
Foshee Wilson, once again, I feel like a proud sister moment. When we talked before Mayor Silva decided to embark upon this campaign, one of the things is he wanted to show respect and honor to Mayor King. And I feel that you did that, that you get to come along and you get to come along with innovation and new ideas. And when you do that, you show people that they get to have an opportunity to serve and to be in a position to. And so you honor those who left, but you also have a welcome brigade for those that are coming in. I know that you are going to do a phenomenal job and you have large shoes to fill, but you are the man equipped to do so. I'm so honored and happy for you. And there is no one else that could have got me out in this weather with my bedazzled Uggs to come and support you because I love you and I honor you and I'm so very proud of you. And this is a proud sister moment for me. Thank you.
Before we turn it over to Mr. Mayor, is there anybody else who wants to say anything? Okay, you can have it.
It's weird because I wrote remarks. Oh, oh, never mind.
Delay the mayor's remarks. I do want to congratulate you, Mayor Silva, on behalf of Assembly Member Hart and Senator Lamone. It's really exciting to have your leadership coming. This is an amazing time for the city of Buellton, whether it's what's happening with the future home of the library or the trail. So much is to be looked forward to. So we want to congratulate you in addition to being someone who's brought a lot of new ideas to the council. You're also one of the first LGBTQ folks to serve in this area and as mayor of this city. And we really appreciate that as well. So on behalf of Assembly Member Hart and Senator Lamone, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll be real quick. James Carriaco, City Council, City of Guelph. We are your librarian. So it's and I'm sorry that I wasn't able to be here for saying goodbye to Dave. Cal City's conferences won't be the same without him. But I do want to welcome you. I look forward to working with you, David, and the rest of the new and returning council members. Looking forward to continuing to partner with you on library services and other issues important to to all of our small, medium-sized cities in this county. Congratulations.
Hi, Lauren Lastra, and I am here today as president of San Diego Valley Pride. And I just really want to thank the city. I see Buellton as a leader in this valley. So that's kudos to all of you. And also I just want to extend our heartfelt congratulations to Mayor Silva. And we really look forward to collaborating with you and to a bright future ahead. Thank you.
Again, it's Mark Lincoln with the Sheriff's Office. Welcome aboard. We, I appreciate you meeting with me prior to discuss public safety. That is paramount again, as I, as I mentioned earlier. We are facing trying times, as you know, but I look forward and the Sheriff's Office looks forward. CHP, we're gonna continue to make Buellton one of the safer cities. Our stats are showing that. And anticipate that continued cooperation without any disagreement whatsoever. So as you know, we will work well with you as best we can at all times for the sake of the city. So I appreciate that. Appreciate all of you and the work that you do for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. So it's weird now to do the bit again, saying I had prepared remarks, but I'm not gonna use them right now, but I just had to. Before I get started, I just wanted to take a moment. This is really, it's a really overwhelming time. This is really special. It means a lot. And before I, this is like I turned one of those Oscar moments where if I only had the mascara with one drip that I could have done. I want to take a moment first before saying my comments or anything with just acknowledging that one person who couldn't be with us tonight was a neighbor and a resident of Buellton. His name is Mark Lincoln, who I got to know throughout the campaign process. And one of the main things that got me involved with politics was what my husband's journey with cancer was. And unfortunately, we lost Mr. Lincoln to that. And he loved Buellton. He loved local politics and he was such an inspiration to get to know. And he loved all the gossip that took place with. And so we have tonight his wife Sandy Lincoln here in the audience with us and it means a lot. And I just wanted to thank you for coming. And thank you like for sharing the time that you had with me and with Mark. It was wonderful to get to know him throughout this whole process and I just really appreciate you being here tonight. So thank you for that.
Watch TV, baby. I'm on TV. I'm on TV.
John, you're not muted.
Sorry, well, a good time to break in and also thank David and I apologize for my Zoom skills. Anyway, David, I look forward to working with you and I've enjoyed working the two years we've had together. And always a pleasure and you've always been professional and fun. And like I said, I've enjoyed every minute of it and I look forward to another at least two years with you. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Sorry about the mute.
Thank you. It means a lot, though, to have everyone in this in this room together. And when I first moved here, there was always this conversation of Buellton kind of thing. It has carried a lot of what is Buellton? What does it mean to move to a small town? What does the valley? And it's become such a home. It's become the place where when you meet your neighbors, they become family. We look out for each other here and it's such a moment of pride to have a community rally around and support. And the biggest thing that I've always said with wanting to be mayor of the town was how do we get people to feel engaged with this community? How do we get people to feel safe? How do we get people to feel proud of it? And the thing is that we already are. We are so proud. Everyone who lives in this town is so proud to live here and I'm so excited about that. We have a community that isn't just a bedroom community. We want to invest. So oftentimes we've talked about as a council that we can do more than just be a servicing of municipalities in terms of municipality services. We can actually build a community around here. We can actually provide a space where people are proud to call home and we're doing that. And I'm really grateful to both of the council members up here with me and with Councilmember Sanchez of what we can do to invest in this space. It means a lot for me to have your faith in being mayor of this town. Buellton is a place that welcomes all. Buellton's a place that respects all and Buellton's a place who takes care of each other. And that does not go unnoticed by our surrounding cities. We can continue to be a guiding emulation for other cities of what it means to invest in the people of this town. And I'm so looking forward to working, working with all of you, whether you are a resident of Buellton, of solving or you made the trek up here from some other location. We can do so much great work together and to have you all here is very powerful and meaningful. And so I thank you all. I look forward to making you all proud and serving this great town. So thank you, guys, for everything you've done and everything we're gonna do together. I'm so excited to get to work with all of you. Thank you. And now we get to talk about item C. There's appointment of vice mayor and it's a very exciting thing. I got to serve as it for a year. And I am just gonna roll with it until someone tells me there's no guardrails yet. So you can, my honeymoon phases throughout this whole entire meeting, I think. So. I guess.
The last couple of minutes.
Yes, do we have to do public comment on item C?
If there is public comment to be made, I.
Is there any public comment on item C? Great. So I guess we'll bring it back to council for the discussion of appointment of vice mayor. I know I have opinions, but I'm sure I can wait for anyone else if anyone has ideas. Here.
No, I thought you just appointed a vice mayor. Is that not how it goes?
The mayor doesn't. The council, the council, the whole points to vice mayor.
So I personally think that after four years of wonderful service to this town of the amount of guidance and leadership that she's provided and for the sake of, I think she would bring a very unique perspective. I would really love to entertain an idea of nominating vice, or I'm sorry, Councilmember Lewis to be our next vice mayor for the city of Buellton.
Thank you.
If you're willing, it's first off, I guess we have to ask, is that something you're interested in?
I suppose I could do that. Yes, thank you.
So is there any other nominations that the council would like to consider? Hearing none, is there a chance for a motion?
This is just on me, right? John can't even say anything. I'm just looking at him in Zoom. Yeah, no, that's fine. I second.
Well, I need you to make this.
Oh, I moved to appoint Lisa Lewis as as vice mayor.
I'll second it.
Thank you, thank you.
But you still have to vote. You still have to vote. Be mature.
You want to vote?
We have to vote. Come on.
Aye.
Councilmember, or I'm sorry, Mayor Silva.
Aye.
And Councilmember Lewis.
Aye.
And it passes. Yeah.
So with that in mind, I know that we just did a lot of the ceremonial piece and so many people are here. We wanted to take a quick break if it's possible so that we can have the yays, the photos. We wanted to take a quick break if it's possible so that we can have the yays, the photos. We also need to take a group photo with us too. You're going to take so many photos tonight, Councilmember Hornick. So anyway, but wanted to thank you all for being here. And so we'll take a quick break here so we can have some celebration. Councilmember Sanchez, we'll keep you in the loop. Just keep your mic off. Okay. So we'll rejoin shortly. All right. We will resume our meeting at 6:56 PM. I just want to hit the gavel as many times as possible tonight. It'll just be fun. So I will now move on to written communications.
We have no written communications this evening.
Wonderful. Committee reports. Anyone have a committee report?
Hold on one second, Mr. Mayor. Sorry. We haven't done comments.
Oh, yeah, I know. I have to do. Yeah. So we have the council comments. I was just getting through this list because I needed to circle back.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we were going to circle back.
Yeah. Anyone for committee reports tonight?
I think I gave a committee report for Buellton last time, right?
The, uh, the.
Yeah, okay. I'm just getting confused, but yes, no, none.
Okay. So now we'll do council comments. Councilmember Lewis. Councilmember Lewis, anything?
I just wanted.
I'm sorry. Oh, yes. That's what my question. I get to say for vice mayor Lewis, anything for the evening?
For us tonight, I just wanted to compliment the Buellton Visitors Bureau on the Breakfast with Santa and the Winterfest stuff, especially with Kathy being sick. They all banded together. It was great. It was very efficient, well-run, and the kids loved it. So it was great.
Thank you. Councilmember Hornick.
Uh, yes, so I did, uh, meet with Eva Powers of San Diego Valley Botanic Gardens, Scott Wolf, twice and then once today with also you, Mayor Silva, about the Thousand Trees Initiative. And I wanted to kind of give an update on that and that we are moving forward with and trying to figure out the best way to sort of roll out this initiative. One of the things that came to the topic of conversation today was looking, having staff look at forming a 501(c)(3) in that way that people could donate to the city. And that the city could take donations and so those donations would also be tax deductible. And I was wondering if we could give council direction for staff to, to look into the formation of a 501(c)(3) and see if that would be something that we could do. And if there would be any conflict of interest with the city council acting as a board of directors of that 501(c)(3).
If it's the pleasure of the council, we'll be happy to look into it. Sounds good to me.
Yeah, me too.
We have direction.
Okay, those are my comments.
And I don't have anything. So moving along, we'll go on to business items with item 13, disposition of city council seat vacancy. And our contact will be City Manager Scott Wolf.
Thank you, Mayor Silva, members of the city council. This item this evening is being brought forward for, for an obvious reason. Mayor Silva has moved into the mayor's seat, leaving vacant the city council seat for district number four. When a council vacancy occurs, the city council has 60 days to determine whether or not they're going to appoint a, a replacement to that position or whether they're going to hold a special election. If a decision is not made within 60 days from the vacancy which took place this evening, then a special election will occur. So the question before the council this evening is, how, how does the council desire to fill this vacancy? There are a few options. You can call for a special election. If you call for a special, a special election, the city clerk will start the process. It will take several months, possibly up to six months to work through all the required notices and, and all the required paperwork and filing deadlines and such to get to the point where an election can be handled. The cost for conducting such an election, the County of Santa Barbara's Election Division has indicated to us that they can hold a single district election, mail-in ballots only to accommodate our vacancy, but they can do so at a cost of between thirty thousand and thirty-five thousand dollars. So that's option, I will call it option number one. The the second option is to fill the seat by appointment, and you can do that anytime within sixty days. We cannot do that this evening as it's not on our agenda, but anytime we can do it on the January ninth meeting, if you'd like to call a special meeting at some other time, we can do it. We can do that and have the appointment made at that point. Anytime up to, pardon me, I've got February tenth is the deadline for that. So, no, I'm sorry, that can't be right. Sixty days from tonight. Yeah. February tenth. Yes, that's right. Yeah, yeah, okay, it is, yeah, February tenth. So anytime before that date, the city council can make that appointment. So staff would recommend that you discuss amongst yourselves how, whether you wish to have a special election or fill this vacancy by appointment. Should you decide to fill it by appointment, I will note that in the past that the city has conducted a vacancy, filling of vacancies by, in the same manner which we have done Planning Commission vacancies, where we'll post a notice that there is a vacancy and request applicants from the community. The that is certainly something we can do, however, given the 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 district alignment now of of the the council, we're it might be more advantageous and less awkward for the city council to look at appointing based upon individual nominations from council members. So I'll leave that to the council's discretion, however you want to do it. If you'd like to have applications submitted, do that, you know, staff is happy to do that. Just give us that direction. At that point, then, we'll have to have a discussion as to how we're going to cull those applications down to a manageable number so that you can make a selection from them at a given meeting date. But this is entirely a city council process. I'm simply here presenting options to you. I'm here and the city attorney is here to answer any questions you may have, but we await your direction.
Thank you. I know before we get into comments, I just want to see if there's any questions for staff by the council. Okay, then guess if start to pick each other's brain on this. I don't know if you want to take where you're feeling at at this time, or Vice Mayor Lewis.
Thank you. I like the idea of appointing for making sure that we keep the timeline with the planning commission and all of that. So I think appointing is good. I I guess my question is, we're appointing from just our own nomination. People aren't putting their names in the hat? Or is there a way that people put their names in the hat? Like, because I know there's not, like, one of the options is have an application, right? So do they just say, hey, I'm interested? Or can we say, hey, are you interested? Like, how exactly?
If if you choose to put applications out, what would happen is the same thing that the clerk typically does for a planning commission appointment. She will post a notice on the city's website, post it out on our posting boards here, and accept applications through a designated application period, at which point we'll compile all those applications and get them to the city council so that you can review them and make a decision. If you decide not to go that route, then it would be a situation where we simply announce a vacancy and advise anyone who should call in or is watching, who who would, who is interested in in being that appointee to contact council members and discuss that with you individually.
That was my question. Okay, that was just the question, the the method for how that.
And and I can say that the last time I went through this, which was with a different city, they followed that route. They let it be known and council members went and talked to commissioners and other community members with whom they were familiar, and each came in with one to three potential, and then they all kind of talked it through. So that is normal, even though it sounds a little weird. It's a completely normal way to do it if if you so desire.
I thought of a question.
That was true.
So if we went the application route, like, what is it? What does the application even look like? Is it just throw your name in a hat? I want, here's my background?
The applications, for instance, for a planning commissioner, ask them for a brief background that they may, they might have, particularly with regard to 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 planning type issues, but also just with regard to their involvement in the community, how long they've lived here, those sorts of questions. Very basic, very broad, nothing that you'd like, you'd be likely to make a decision based upon without some further discussion.
Yeah. Do kind of like that option. I can we, I think we should probably rule out election if we're gonna go, sorry, stick next. But anyway, I think I would, if we're gonna boil this down, I would also, after discussing with past city council members and the general public, but I think we should steer away from an election and cost the taxpayers that much money just to do an election for this one appointment. So I would lean toward appointment as well. Do you want to chime in on that?
No, I'm of agreement with that. I think I think we can, at least the three of us are here at this point in consensus of appointment seems to be the route we want to go. So, okay, so at least we can say stop direction wise, we're talking appointment. Now that we've moved into that phase of the conversation, it's if we would like an application or more of a one-on-one outreach. Personally, for me, there is part of, like, I think that no matter what an application is, one-on-one outreach is going to be critical for any kind of vetting. You can't have a conversation where you'd feel confident appointing someone, in my opinion, by reading a paper application. I think that inherently, we would still have to meet with the individual and have conversations just to get to know them. I would like to avoid a interview process at the January ninth meeting where you invite everyone up and you ask these round robin questions. I don't think that's a good process for getting to know people and understanding their thought. I think that there needs to be kind of pre-conversations and understanding so that you have the time to get to know an applicant instead of it being kind of a spelling bee style question and answer period. I just don't think that's how people, when we're trying to get people to feel like they want to be involved, that is not a process that is very inviting or comfortable for most. So I'd rather avoid that if possible.
Yeah, I I agree, but I think it also should be incumbent upon the person who's seeking appointment tells to reach out and try and touch base with different city council members.
Oh, yeah, I think that it should be proactiveness by the applicants that are interested to reach out to council members.
And that's kind of why I was thinking that it would be cool if the city could put on the website, like, some kind of notice, like, let people in District four know so that we get a qualified, you know, applicant. Otherwise, like Alicia and I, you, if you live in that district, will go out and have to knock on doors and like, hey, do you guys want to, anybody interested? I think that we should let the public know that this appointment is available, and that's why I like the application, even it's just simple, hey, I'm interested. And then, you know, if anybody's listening, recognizes incumbent upon you to reach out and say, hey, this is my deal to us. I don't know.
I think so. My big thing is having new people be involved and getting, like, people that are not, yeah, new, just new voices, new opinions and all that. And I think that when we look at an application, it tends to sort of give the advantage to people who can list that they have all this different experience when it's not necessarily just experience we're looking for. I had no experience. He had no experience. I'm not, I don't think you had experience. So I think the application lends us towards looking for experience, whereas the reach out is more of like a personality fit and a and a desire to be civically active. I kind of like the reach out, and if you don't have the wherewithal or the desire to reach out like personally, then I don't know that an application.
Well.
You know, like, it's easier to put in a paper application, is what I'm trying to say, rather than, like, make the effort to reach out.
I totally agree, but I also think that, like, we should have a couple of things, right? Like, if if somebody is going to be interested in being appointed, they're gonna reach out. If their only reach out is an application, well, that's us. Right? But I think that if the city promulgates information that, hey, this appointment is available, then people can know about it, and they can put an application in, and then we can, so we can talk to those individuals rather than just like, I mean, right now, unless they're watching this meeting right now, they might not know that an appointment is available, right? And so I just think we should get the word out about that. I don't care if it's an application, or they just do their hat in the ring, or they contact us directly, but I think the city should should promulgate that information and let people know. And and to me, to the application point, I mean, I think more information is better. I mean, it might be hard for an individual in a month or so with the holidays coming up to say, you know, to reach and talk to each of us or whatever else and say, hey, this is my background, this is my deal. An application is really just, this is my background, this is where I'm from. And, yeah, you don't get a lot out of it, but like, at least it's something.
I I think in kind of homogenizing some of this, my thought would just be, we advertise on the website, we advertise it on social media and push it out there with an encouragement to, if interested, email council@cityofbuellton.com. That would then go to all four of our council, like, all four of us get notified of people who are interested, you know, it's like, just the introductory email, just so that it is, there's like a self-selection of it. But I would say that if we're trying to have a January ninth appointment to get an application up that then gets filled out, that then gets submitted, that then gets vetted, that then we all kind of run for, it's like, you kind of have to have these conversations if we want that happening without any stutters or hurdles to that. So I would just say maybe we advertise as email council at city of Buellton if interested, and then we can proactively also, like, oh, let's grab coffee, let's connect, let's chat, and just maybe have that be kind of the way to do it so that we don't have to have an application process that can slow us down when we're going to have maybe between now and then twelve to fifteen business days where people are willing to somewhat pay attention if we even have that.
I would agree.
Yeah, I mean, I'd say that's how you guys want to do it. I'm fine with it. I just, yeah, I don't, I don't like it being incumbent upon us to reach out to these individuals.
Oh, no, no, I just think it's a good way for them to notify and also then just introduce, and then they can follow up with us individually to schedule time for discussion or things like that.
Sure. When we put the blast out, though, like, can we just say, notifies any council of your interests? It might be a good idea to put some that kind of information about yourself.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put that into our into our website announcement, into social media announcements. If the council's open to it, not only can we put the council at cityofbuellton.com email address on there so that you all get it. You've all given us phone numbers that you've authorized us to to release to the public so that they can contact you directly. We'll post those, and there are also that everyone has the ability to call you directly, whether or not they send the email out, they can contact each of you directly.
Yeah.
And
My big caveat is, if you ever ask for a resume, it gets rid of ninety percent of the people who are willing to do it, because like, I have to update my resume, which I'm not saying is the right thing, but I am just saying, if we're trying to have the broadest, and so maybe it's just best for, like, you know, share your interest, more of that, a short statement of why you're interested in.
Obviously, a resume, but like, yeah, and the application's pretty straightforward. I'm sure you remember from the planning commission application, it's not, it's not too complex. Even if it was, you still get a chance to stand up here and say, this is what I'm about, this is my deal, and people ask questions.
I'm saying, I think we're trying to avoid that.
Well, that's the other thing I want to talk about is, so are we not going to do that then on the appointment, appointment meeting? Are we not going to have these individuals? Because let's just say there's five of them, right? So there's four of us, and so we'll have five applicants. Are we just gonna just pick one and then bring that one forward? And I'd say, this is my applicant. This is when I think we hit that point. Everybody does the same, or how are we gonna work that process?
In my mind, I would think of it as, we would review, have, and come to council with an idea of who we're interested in doing and having a discussion with it. But I don't think, I don't like the idea of bringing five applicants up to do a round robin Q and A. Yeah, it's just, that should be done where I think it's a lot more authentic when you do it a bit more casually versus.
For sure. There is, I don't like non-transparency, though, of like, having us decide on our own, hopefully, meeting these individuals. You know, that's the one thing about having come to the podium and speak is that every, the public kind of see what determinations are made in how.
I will just say then, in that situation, I would, then we'd have to be thoughtful of who goes first, who gets to hear the answers prior, how are you stacking it? You know, there's a lot more to an interview being done that is then you're trying to remove bias that can even come within that, based upon questions and answers.
Mr. Mayor, one thing you could do, the item will obviously have to allow public comment, so you could allow any any applicant to give the same three minutes of public comment as everyone else, and it would just be in whatever order that they put it into Linda, so it would be basically randomized that way. And then, rather than the question and answer, which seems to be the problem, it would basically be kind of their statement to the public, their elevator pitch. There you go, sir.
I like that. How do you feel about that?
Yeah, I like that.
Okay, then it's just a public comment for them to log in, and then that will give their chance to make their case, and then there isn't any bias of change or anything like that.
Give them a heads up that will, you know, that they have that opportunity if they're so just.
Yeah.
We will.
Question, do we want to put, so we're not going to put any applications then in the packet? That's not gonna happen. So you guys will meet with people and then let them know.
We're gonna do an email and social media.
Yes, we'll put it out, we'll make an announcement to the public, put it out, let them know to contact council members individually. It would be beneficial, at least from my perspective, if, when you, if you get applicants that that reach out to you, you would advise them to contact me as well. I can give them a city council candidate book that we put together, so at least they're kind of aware of what they're getting into, and they they can read through it and decide, is this something I'm really interested in, or is it not? I can make myself and the staff available for any questions that they have as well, but I will leave that to you to.
Is this the book that you that you gave me at orientation, the binder?
Yes. That is pre-election, pre-election. Now, the the council handbook is probably twice that size, but this was just the condensed version.
An abridged version.
Just the basics.
Cool. I should make a motion for somebody.
I think we just have to give staff direction. So I'm sorry, you have a comment on this?
Comment, I forgot to, I forgot to bring up in the comment section. Can I bring up a comment? It's related.
Yeah. Why not?
Yeah.
Go for it.
So my comment is, and I'd spoken about this earlier, just to Scott, and I was hopeful, I would really like to push to get an e-newsletter out, and I was thinking we could piggyback that on the Buellton Buzz, or just whatever the Buellton Buzz is to make that happen. I don't know, I ended to collect email addresses, but, you know, for a lot of us, myself included, I don't get the Buellton Buzz and get my my water meter update through electronic mail, and so it would just be nice to have information, because this would be that on point information that I could save in my Gmail, and I could have, if I was interested, I could go back and click it, and I'd be taken directly to the link to say, hey, guys, this is my deal. Please appointment.
Which is also lovely, because I'm gonna piggyback off of that, totally out of turn with my own comment. I was saying, thinking that we may want to have an exploration, if there's willingness, of an RFP to go out to redesign our entire Buellton website that could create the functionality of e-newsletters, create the functionality for what's it called, e-commerce and things like that with like our recreational, recreation department, things like that. They, we could do a refresh of that, that then you can embed within new websites the functionality for newsletters to be distributed a lot easier than trying to continue with this. I think we're using Word, like a Word art.
Right, right now, the the newsletter is put together in Publisher and just printed. What I would suggest that that we do in the meantime, if if you want to move forward with the e-newsletter, is is I would use our Buellton Engage platform. I would direct anyone through social media and our website to visit that platform and sign up for the email list for that particular page, and every time a newsletter is published, we'll send out a notice to everyone saying, hey, the newsletter is here, come look at it. Click here and view the newsletter.
What's an email saying, click here for the newsletter?
Yeah.
Can I just send a newsletter?
The functionalities.
Well, we can, but what, the functionality of the Buellton Engage page is that it compiles the email list so that what we do then is we input the document in there, and we tell people, hey, there's a document here as opposed to having to send a hard, send a document to two thousand people, which.
So a little background about me, before I was in law school, I did a lot of marketing, web design stuff, user interface stuff. And I'm sure this goes without saying, but, you know, every step that the user has to take is one, you'd lose a lot of interaction.
And 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 that's where the functionality of a of an updated modern web design would come into play here.
That's true.
Our, yeah.
It's very expensive.
Well, so is maintaining a constant contact account for thousands of email addresses.
So, so we're getting a bit of field. I think, I think I heard the mayor say, is there consensus to maybe bring this back for agendas discussion? And then if we decide, then direct an RFP.
I was, yes, yes, so. We do that, and then if the exploration, are we willing to even have an RFP discussion at that time, too?
I want to see what it costs before I decide.
I can, I can, yeah, I'm happy to have that conversation, but I can tell you right now, I have great concerns about the financial costs of that.
Yes, but it'd be good for us to have a conversation with numbers versus having a conversation saying we need numbers. So maybe we could give staff direction to look into an RFP so we can have the numbers to decide if we want to spend it or not.
We actually will have to have a discussion and then give the direction for the.
So discussion.
I I could probably come up with some estimates in advance, but the RFP would be officially what we need to do.
Sounds good. So consensus for that for next, an agenda item, future sources to talk?
Sure. What about the newsletter? I mean, we. Sure. What about the newsletter? So this, I mean, we, I just want to put that as a comment. I would hope that we can look into that.
If that's council's direction, I will absolutely.
So let's have a conversation both about a website redesign and an e-newsletter. So it's a twofold process so we can walk and chew gum at the same time.
Okay, so. Direction with just the e-newsletter before we do the website thing, because I would just like to have the e-newsletter roll out. If that's, if it's, I don't want to have to be. Integral to a full website.
If the city council wants to give direction to implement an e-newsletter, I will look at what our our most. Efficient manner of doing so is and at least get that rolling. And then we can look at improvements to that as we move forward if that's, that's acceptable.
An e-newsletter duct tape solution for now while we discuss what would be infrastructural changes and they don't have to be. They don't have to be at the same time. Everyone good with that? Great.
As long as it's not putting your, your look is telling me that you're stressed about it. Or is that?
No, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I'm in my head. I'm still trying to figure out, okay, what's, what's more efficient than the built in engage method? I'll say that stress look never goes.
I just wanted to make sure that it's not like, oh, God, I know we can't do this and I'm gonna just.
No, no, no.
Okay.
We will find a way.
Yeah, I think, and just to get back to Mayor Silva's point is that. I don't want perfection to be good and good here, right? Like it might, it might be clunky for a bit. And if it is too clunky, that will, we will develop pain points that we can rectify. Eventually with the website redesign or something, but but I do want to move forward because I think that's an effective way to reach people and I would like to look into it.
Great. Sounds like we have staff guidance for that. So everyone feels good about it. Splendid. All right, moving on to item fourteen, discussion of planning commission appointment timeline and process and our staff contact will once again be city manager Scott Wolf.
Thank you, Mayor Silva, members of the council. As you are aware, earlier this year, there were some changes made to how planning commissioners are. Appointed and the terms that they serve. You'll recall that the city council. Shortened the terms of planning commissioners from four year terms to two year terms with the exception of the council or excuse me of the planning commissioners who are already in the midst of a four year term. Those two planning commissioners are being allowed to complete their four year terms, which will end in twenty twenty six. Those two planning commissioners have been assigned by ordinance that the city council adopted. To the city council members for districts two and three. So that means that at this time. We will need planning commission appointments from the mayor as well as district one and district four. Obviously, before district four, a planning commissioner appointment can take place, we'll need to have a district four city council member appointed. But we we face a similar issue that we face with the city council appointment in that we need to have a discussion on that. The, the discussion this evening here is to determine. Or it's just, it's more informational. I'm going to suggest that we bring this item back on January ninth. Our next regular city council meeting for discussion. At which time the city council members who are up, who are, who can make an appointment that evening can make the appointment. Now, we've already had the announcement of the vacancy. We've already had the application period that has opened and closed. We have collected, I believe, four applicants for three empty seats. Those applications have been emailed to you. We will. Put those in the city council packet for the January ninth agenda, if that's the direction you wish to give for that meeting. And I would suggest that at that evening, the council members who need to make an appointment would select. Applicants from one of those four and nominate them for appointment to the planning commission. Once those nominations are made, the nominations would need to be ratified by a vote of the entire city council. So I, I, it should be a relatively simple process. If you have any questions or concerns or you wish to change that process, let me know. Otherwise, this is informational. If you have no changes for me, we will, we will bring this back to the city council on January ninth for that process.
Any questions for staff before we get into discussion and comments? All right. Any comments or discussion, Vice Mayor Lewis?
Just that I like the process as we set it up and I think that we're, I have nothing that would change.
Yeah, I have, I'm of agreement with it. So it sounds like we're all comfortable then with. We'll put the applications in the packet. That also will allow anyone who's interested in the appointment to have time to review ahead of time so that if they do get appointed. They can come in semi-informed about the applicants so that they can make an informed decision for their. Seat appointment of the planning commission since they'll get seated and then immediately after have to do a planning commission appointment. So we'll just have to make sure that that's out there so that they can be informed at that time. But yeah, it sounds like it's a good plan.
I'm sorry, so that's clarifying to me. So wherever we appoint, we'll immediately have to appoint.
So by putting the applications in the packet, anyone who is interested and selected would have the ability to have reviewed that prior to the meeting so they could be. Equipped to make a decision at the time of being seated.
Sorry, I think what, what, I, I think you guys were talking past each other. Councilman, I think what the mayor is saying is the new council appointee will then turn around immediately that day.
He picks up what I've been. No, it's good. It's, it's a lot. I was just. The shortness of time.
And and honestly, if if you get an appointment, if you get a council member appointee that night who is. Uncomfortable making an appointment that quickly, the city council can't allow this or can't continue that appointment to the next meeting or to.
That might be wise. I mean, just. You know, in terms of conversation, I mean, you remember this, it's a whirlwind. You don't know what you're doing.
Yeah, I think what we can do is have that discussion at the time of the appointment process if they would like to. I think, I think we should give some. Latitudes for a person to select how they'd like to move forward or not.
Yeah, we'll decide.
Yeah, okay, sounds good.
Well, actually, I'm sorry. Will we decide then? Because it's only one meeting next. And so we'll decide then if we're going to say, okay, we're going to appoint somebody to city council and then. We'll have to vote on that and whether or not we're going to continue the planning commission appointment to the next meeting.
No, what I'm saying is that I think we should worry about the appointment and then that person who is selected. Could make a decision at the time if they'd like to do an appointment or if they would like to personally ask for a continuation for them to make a decision. I think it's. That council member appointment make that decision, not us make the decision for them ahead of time.
I believe there's an assumption. That if you're making a city council appointment on January ninth, that the, the persons being nominated. By council members for appointment to the city council would all be present. And that the person who is appointed would immediately be seated. And not, not wait till the next meeting, but be seated immediately. If that's the case. They would have had the packet in advance or had the ability to review the packet in advance. And could be prepared to make an appointment to the planning commission. If not, they could request. A two week continuance and come back and do it at the second meeting.
Which wouldn't encroach upon district one or the mayor's seat for making an appointment.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just a little concerned about that process.
Okay, in what manner?
Well, I just, one, I think it's a lot to ask the incumbent appointee and two, I think that it's. I just would be worried that our decision on who to appoint be tied to the planning, their planning commission.
But we wouldn't know that.
Would we not?
No.
We're gonna meet with them hopefully, right? And talk to them.
But they wouldn't know who the, the applicants are for the planning commission when we talk to them.
That's not public information.
Well, it's not been released at this point. The applications will be put out in the packet or the agenda packet the week, the Friday prior to. The, the January ninth meeting.
Okay, you see what I'm getting at though? I just want a level of separation between the decision to appoint somebody to the city council and the decision to appoint. Somebody to plan.
We're not hinging our decision on who we appoint.
And I'm not saying that we, that I just would like a look to be able to say, hey, there's a, there's a little bit of separation here.
So would two weeks between the two decisions change that?
Well, I think because, yeah, because it would be clearly appointed just this individual based on our interpretation of their ability to contribute to. The city council and not necessarily what they're going to turn around and immediately do.
And so by it being two weeks later, that will feel separate for you?
If we, if we don't. Publish the applications until after the appointment of the city council member. You know, we would publish it the Friday following the appointment of the, or a week following the appointment of the new council member. Then that wouldn't be out there in the public for them to to review ahead of time.
Now I'm confused.
It's just. He's just saying we would delay putting out the, the information by who's asked to be on a pointed to planning commission until after we appoint.
The city council.
So at the twenty third meeting then?
If, if that's the direction, if they want to go on the twenty third, I would suggest we not. If that's the concern that would cause it to be moved to the twenty third, then the suggestion would be to not publish the applications until the agenda packet for the twenty.
Which means.
A decision till the twenty third and it's not hindering anything to not make a decision until the twenty third.
Any director keeper? Do we have anything significant coming in early January?
Um, nothing that has to go in early January, so.
Actually, I believe the way the code is written until the council makes an appointment, the existing planning commissioners. Uh, retain their seats. Is that correct? Or will continue to, to meet. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't be without a planning commission for that two week period.
Does this cause any issue with the fact of a two year appointment that we would be knocking out the first month of?
I'm just, I'm making a suggestion.
I don't know, I'm just.
Into this idea, just like making, I'm just thinking out loud because.
Oh, I know, I know.
I honestly don't think that they're really that tied. I don't think, at least personally. Like I want everyone to have their own voice. And have their own opinions. And I think that the diversity of the voices, like you and I not agreeing on everything is good for this council and is good for this city. And I think that like, looking at the appointment, they should have the full autonomy to make the decision whether they feel ready or not.
Oh, you mean just to leave it up to the.
Yeah, it's, I think, I agree. I think it's like, if they want to make an appointment, great. If they don't and they want two weeks, great. Then we just move forward with it that way.
Sounds like you guys. Have a motion.
There we, there's no motion. This is just direction.
Well, it sounds like that's direction. That's, I mean, that's fine with me. I mean, I was just, I mean. Talking it through, will two weeks really make a difference? We'll probably, you know, talk to them about their direction, how they see. City going and how they would, they would look for a planning mission anyway. I just. Yeah, I just, I guess, like I said, I was reluctant to have the appearance of. City council member being appointed because of their potentially chosen direction.
Understood. Are we good with moving forward? Okay, move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, just a few items for you this evening. First of all, the question on everyone's mind, when is the library opening? The answer is, we just don't know yet. We anticipate it will take place in mid to late January, but. At this point, we are still waiting for some final wrap up items by the contractors in the building. When those are complete. We will hand over the keys to the library staff and allow them to start moving into the building. I don't have a timeframe from them yet as to how long it's going to take. We probably won't until they get in there and start moving things in. So. Our, our goal is to get, is to have a grand opening sometime right around the middle or to the end of January, but no guarantees will keep you posted. The second meeting in January, we will have an item and it's, it's only been done once before, but it is the, the now annual. Discussion of proclamations and observances. And so we, you've got the, the list and we will publish the list of. Of this past year's proclamations and observances. If you have any additional. Thoughts, please prepare those so that that discussion can take place on January twenty third. Because as you know from last year, these things come quick. And if we miss too much in January, then we're stuck with last year's. Actually, we're anticipating using last year's list in this January. And we'll start the year in February, but we don't want to delay it too much beyond that. City Hall will be closed for the holidays, December twenty fourth and December twenty fifth, as well as January first. The rest of the time, we will be open. All those staffing may be minimal. Because of vacations over the holiday period. You know that. And lastly, as we've just discussed, our next regular meeting of the city council will be January ninth. And I'm happy to answer any questions about this or anything else you have this evening.
Any questions for staff? Anything from our city attorney?
Not a thing.
Great. So then we will resume our next meeting on January ninth.